This conference will now be recorded.
Good. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order and I'm asking everyone to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I'm gonna go ahead and call the role, Commissioner Nuprock.
Present.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
And I am Commissioner Elka Sherry, I am here. Commissioner Keeler is absent, excused. Commissioner Smith is absent, excused, and Commissioner Jones.
Here.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to roll into the fun part of the evening, the funnest part of the evening is the election of officers. And I would like to remind everyone that there's no law stating you have to keep the same folks in charge year after year. Just, just keep that away. No, no, I was saying, there is no law that says you have to keep the same. Um, it's December, I think it.
The, the usual time is December. We may have done it this past January, but the rules of procedure say December.
Yeah. Um. Yeah. Hey, look at that, it's the dream team, we're doing it on time, that's great. So I'm gonna go ahead and proceed with the election of officers, and I do want to caveat one thing, I did reach out to Commissioner Smith, who asked that we did not make him vice chair behind his back again, so. So. You know, it's like getting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. You know what, this is a man who understands law and words. He said vice chair, so yeah, he's open for chair. So, um, just a reminder, we, you only need one person to nominate for the position, and then I'll kind of tediously call for nominations three times, just to make sure that it's inclusive and that no one is being shy. And then you can choose someone, we'll close the nominations, and then that person can speak for, let's just say, a minute, and then we'll close that session, and then we'll just take our vote, and then move on to the next position. And we have three possession, positions to elect for this evening. So I am going to go ahead and call for nominations for the position of chair. Any nominations for the position of chair?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other nominations for chair?
What, Paul, throw your hand in.
I'm just an alternate anyway, so I don't think I could.
We, we might have an update on that soon. Brian and I are working on something. Uh, calling, second call for chair, nomination for chair. Third call, yeah, you gotta do three calls, you gotta do three calls. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the nominations for chair, and I will say that I will accept the nomination, and thank you guys very much for your vote of confidence. Thank you. Yeah, uh, so, so yeah, I would just say thank you for the vote of confidence for, for the nomination. And with that, we can go ahead, and if there are no objections or no discussion, I could just go ahead into the, the vote. Uh, we'll just do verbal, so all those in favor of the nomination for chair for Sharon Elka Sherry, which is me, please say aye. Any nays? And there's no abstentions because it would just be me, um, who is abstaining. So we have three ayes, zero nays, and I'm abstaining. So congratulations to me, I won't bore you with a speech. Thank you guys, appreciate it. All right, um, I'm gonna go ahead and open up nominations for the position of vice chair.
I would nominate Dennis Nuprock.
And we don't need a second, but I would wholeheartedly second that. Dennis, do you accept? All right. All right, so we have a nomination for Commissioner Nuprock. Any other nominations for the position of vice chair? And second call for nominations for vice chair. Third call, nominations for vice chair. Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna close the nominations for vice chair, and Dennis has accepted. And I'm just gonna roll into a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay, we have three ayes, congratulations, Vice Chair Nuprock. All right, uh, rolling on, thanks for making this easy, you guys, uh, rolling on to the position of secretary. I'll open up nominations for the position of secretary now. I would like to nominate Commissioner Hill. Awesome. And the, the floor is still open for any other nominations for secretary, second call? Actually, that was first call, now the second call. Third call. Okay, hearing none, um, we will just roll into a vote. All those in favor of having Commissioner Hill be our secretary, please say aye. Aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay, we have three ayes, congratulations, Secretary Hill. Yes, go ahead. Yes, yes, yes. And, and, and don't think you got off easy, uh, Commissioner Paul, because we were working on something, so. Okay, well, thanks, uh, that, uh, that concludes the, the election portion of it. It was a, um, it was a nail biter, for sure. And, um, all right, hopefully by this time, everyone has had a chance to review the, um, meeting minutes from the September 12th meeting. I would, at this time, entertain a motion to approve those meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any nays? And no abstentions, because we all said aye, so that's unanimous vote for approval of the meeting minutes. Um, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and move into section 1.6, which is, uh, any public comment. Jamie, is this a public comment here?
Yes, I received two emails from Dinah McLean this afternoon, however, she was able to join the call, so she'll be providing her own comments, and those will be made part of the official hearing record.
Okay, perfect, so we can definitely enter the email in, but, um, Dinah, welcome, it's, it's been a while, if you would like to go ahead and make your public comment.
Hi, yeah, thank you. Um, so yeah, this is in regards to municipal code section 18 dot 165 dot 40. Can you hear me all okay, by the way?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, that mixed use section is kind of unclear, as far as what kinds of development are allowed in the mixed use code. And I apologize for my email, I had typed it on my iPad, then lost some in the text, and I was trying to get it in before the deadline, so it is a little bit, um, confusing, but I'm here to clarify it, so essentially, um, what I'm trying to say is, um, when it talks about like a mixed use of residential 65% and 35% commercial, um, I think people are getting confused, and they're thinking that, um, percentage of residential versus commercial applies to individual parcels, within the whole area of the mixed use. And so what I propose is having some kind of statement that lets people know that it's, that mixture is assigned to the whole area. So if you buy that, you know, there's a, for example, there's a 4.5 acre lot for sale on Northwest 319th, that's part of that mixed use area, and they're taught, in their ad, they're telling them, people, that it has to be 65% of one type of residential, and the rest is 35%. When I first saw that ad, it said that 65% of that 4.5 acre area had to be, 65 had to be residential, and 35% had to be commercial, which was not quite the intent of that mixed use code when we developed it. So, um, there was a, a weak attempt at trying to come up with some wording that might make some sense in the Timmins Landing area, as well as other mixed use partial zoning, sorry, as well as other mixed use zoning areas, should they come up in the city of the center. So does that kind of bring things into context of what I'm trying to say and what's going on?
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate it, and we'll make sure that the email gets, um, added to the, uh, to the minutes as well, but I appreciate you participating.
All right, but does that, does that, do you understand what I'm trying to say? Is it confusing?
Yeah, absolutely. Did you guys follow that up?
Chair, are we going to, uh, have staff?
We, we could, we, uh, so typically, public comment, we can take the public comment and, and act on it at a, at a later time, uh, but if, if staff had a comment, do, do feel free to chime in.
Yeah, I guess, this is, uh, Brian Cast, um, Community Development Director, so, you know, we can, uh, look at making that clarification or, or edits next time we have that code open, that would be my suggestion. So we have, we'll add that to our code tracking, uh, spreadsheet, and, uh, we'll make sure to, that as that code comes back open for discussion and edits, that we clarify that. We do, when we have pre-applications or other interest in properties, we do make that clear to applicants. In this case, um, it looks like the Realtor tried to interpret our credit, I don't think we've actually had contact with them, but we have had contact with the property owner, and I think he understands how that division works.
Yeah, because that would be my concern, is that, you know, the, it's, the property is for sale now, and it's confusing developers, so, um, maybe if you could reach out to the, um, Realtor, that might be helpful.
Let's go, Dennis and then Ethan.
Yeah, as Dinah would recall, you know, we wrestled over this. Wanted to.
Can you speak up?
To be mixed use. And the issue was, is how do we do that? We clearly wanted that ratio to apply to the whole development, but the problem is, when the first guy comes in and develops his piece all residential, does that mean that the last guy has to make his all commercial? And so I think this is gonna require, um, some more thought on what we want to do, and I, we do have a site plan being developed out there, right?
Sub-area plan.
And I assume that sub-area plan would address that kind of issue.
Yeah, I think that's something that we will be, uh, discussing and considering, and there definitely will be some code changes that probably can come along with that, that we can make some clarifications or revisions.
Clearly, the intent of the planning commission, the city council approved it, that that zone has some mixed use of commercial and residential. How you do that in the code is somewhat of a quandary to me.
Ethan?
Um, I was gonna pipe up and basically repeat what Brian already said before he said it, so I probably don't need to repeat it again, but yeah, we, we have sort of implemented that understanding across the whole mixed use zone as part of pre-application meetings, and that's something we've been tracking to, to change as part of the sub-area plan development.
Can that sub-area, does that maybe designate certain parcels to likely to be more commercial versus residential? Or does it depend on the developer or purchaser of that parcels?
Um, the way the code is written, it depends upon what the developer wants to do, there, without going into a lot of detail, there was once a concept plan for that area, but it wasn't adopted into the code. And the concept plan showed specific areas that were residential, commercial, and so forth. So as it stands right now, it's just what the developer wants to do, but complying with some of the requirements, like mixing residential use types and that sort of stuff.
Chair, are we going to, uh, have, uh, that email sent to us?
Yes, I can have that forwarded to everyone, and it'll be in the minutes as well of the, of this meeting, but yeah, I can make sure that gets taken care of. Dinah, I wanted to thank you again, we don't get a lot of input from the public, as you may remember, so the input is, is good, and thanks for articulating it so clearly for us.
Okay, thanks, I did have one other thing, if I may. Um, I sent photographs in of parking at the Pollock Park. Um, cars lined up along the grassy area at the, along the roadside and stuff, so, um, the city might want to consider extra parking for that. And then the last photo was just a fun photo about a kayaker kayaking right by the line as it was flooded, so you might want kayak parking instead of car parking, I don't know, but.
That's a great shot, thank you. That is great.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's really boggles the mind, Pacific Northwest with rain, it's crazy. Yeah. All right, so, um, I think. Did we have any other public comment, Jamie? Uh, anything in the voicemail, or?
No, those were the only two I received, and I don't see anyone else on the call, I don't believe.
Thank you very much. All right, um, this month, we have no public hearings, and so I'm going to roll into 1.8 unfinished business, and I think I'm gonna address everyone over there. Is it, is it okay if I just say staff? Because sometimes like, okay, Ethan, take it away, and it's like, hey, it was Alec, that was, so, so maybe I'll just say staff, and then you guys could figure out who's doing the GMA memo.
Yeah, thank you, so I actually am handling this one, and, um, so, um, it's been a couple of months, um, obviously, since, uh, the Planning Commission met, um, and a couple of months prior to that, since we talked to you about the comprehensive plan update, so we have a number of items on your agenda tonight that are all talking about the comprehensive plan update. This particular one, um, is talking about some of the Growth Management Act, um, requirements that have come into place in the last several years. We wanted to make you aware of these, particularly in regards to housing, um, and climate change, um, and resiliency, because, uh, those, um, two things, uh, you know, particularly housing, are going to have a major effect on what the comprehensive plan ends up looking like. So we just wanted to brief you on those couple of topics, and then, um, you know, uh, be available for questions if you have them. So we won't spend a lot of time talking to you about some of the, the foundational requirements of the Growth Management Act, but it is kind of good to talk about them just a little bit. And so, uh, La Center is required to adopt a comprehensive plan, like all jurisdictions in Clark County, as well as all fully planning communities, which are generally those communities on the west side of Washington and the far east side of Washington, and then there's a few in the middle. And the Growth Management Act talks about what has to be in a comprehensive plan, um, and in particular, it's, uh, it gives you the list of required comprehensive plan elements or chapters that each comprehensive plan has to have. I'm not going to, um, recite for you what those are, those are on page seven of your Agenda Packet, if you want to look at them. But the main takeaway of that, uh, particular requirement is that, uh, the climate change and resiliency is a new element of the comprehensive plan that has not been there, um, uh, until recently. One of the other sort of foundational requirements of comprehensive plans is that they be consistent, so all of the elements have to be consistent with each other, you can't have conflicting policies, and you can't base the comprehensive plan on, you know, in one element, on some information, and then in another element, on some completely different information. So basically, what that means is that all comprehensive plans have to be based upon the same or similar population, housing, and employment allocations. And those are given to us, um, from the state down to the county, and then the county breaks those allocations up for the whole county into, divides them up into the, uh, cities and unincorporated areas of the, of the county. And so, um, there's this, there's this really sort of inherent connection between the land use element. You can picture the land use element as kind of the foundation of the whole comprehensive plan, it sets up the organization of uses on the land use map, commercial, residential, um, mixed use, and so forth, how that, how those relate to each other. And then that sort of, uh, helps us know where housing, um, and how much housing is going where, um, and how mu, how many jobs and, and where those are going. And so, um, there's a connection between the land use element and the capital facilities and utilities elements, and it's basically that, those have to rely on the same assumptions, you know, so you have this future year projection of population, housing, and employment, and then the capital facilities and utilities elements have to use that to project the total amount of, um, roads, sewer, water, parks, and so forth, that are needed to serve that, that future population. Um, and then finally, the, um, sort of, one of these foundational elements, um, of the comprehensive plan or, or requirements, I guess, is that, uh, urban growth boundaries have to accommodate 20 years of growth. Um, and if they can't accommodate that much, then you have to either redo the land use map to figure out how you're gonna fit more people in that same area, or you have to look at an urban growth boundary expansion. Um, so those are some of the, kind of the basic requirements, and that's, again, really just kind of a quick refresher on it, but, at this point, I'd like to move into talking about, um, some of the new requirements of the housing element. And so, basically, those are sort of four different dimensions. One is planning for housing by income level, um, and that includes, um, what the state calls extremely low, very low, low, and then moderate income. Um, so essentially, that spans the spectrum from, um, 0% of area, uh, area family in, uh, median income on up to 100% of area median income. Um, so that, that, that's what they mean by extremely low up to, to moderate, so you have to provide enough capacity for housing of, across those income groups. You also have to provide enough capacity for housing of different types, manufactured housing, multifamily housing, group homes, foster care facilities, emergency, emergency housing and shelters, um, permanent supportive housing and moderate density housing. And then, the third thing, I said there was kind of four dimensions of this, the third thing is identifying racially disparate impacts and beginning to take steps to undo them. And then finally, assessing areas at risk of displacement and establishing, uh, anti-displacement policies. So those are kind of the new requirements that are coming to us, um, from the state that we have to plan around, and, and, the way that we sort of figure all this out is through a housing needs assessment, and we, we gather data, Alec is gonna talk to you a little bit more about that later tonight, we gather demographic data and housing data, and sort of, um, come up with a, a profile of the community's housing, existing and future housing needs. So that's kind of the synopsis of what those new requirements of, um, um, for housing elements coming down to us from the state. Maybe I'll just pause there real briefly, if you have any sort of burning questions, and then we can.
No burning, but, so those four, are all four of those, uh, you're gonna be looking to the commission to, uh, fair out where we want to tweak it or change it, or, or are some of those pretty much mandated as they are from the state?
Um, well, each jurisdiction that has to have a comprehensive plan is required to meet those requirements, and so we're responsible, as a city, La Center is responsible for meeting those requirements, which means that we're gonna be working with you over the coming, um, months to, to show how we're, we're meeting all of those.
On each one of those.
Right?
Okay.
Yep.
But I think the good news is, here's the state that's done a good job of writing those two bills together.
Yeah, that's true too, so there's, there's something called the Housing Action Planning Tool, and we attached it to your, um, packet here. And so the Growth Management Act requires the state to figure out by income level how much housing is needed. The county plugs in, um, population information for us, and then that, that spreadsheet sort of spits out an answer for La Center, like how, how many housing units across those different income categories are, are needed, so.
Can I ask, um, um, A, has Clark County given us our projections yet, or what?
We were just talking about that before the meeting, I mean, I think we've been really sort of eagerly awaiting.
Yeah.
Those, um, it was initially going to be November, and the county had a problem with, uh, computer system hacking, so it took them a while to get up and going again, and then it was gonna be December, now it sounds like it's gonna be January. So, we're watching that, and we may have to make sort of adjustments on the fly to the project schedule to sort of accommodate that, because those are obviously really important for us to be able to start talking about how many people we're accommodating and where, and all of that.
The tool has projections out to 2045, where do, where do those come from?
Beyond 2045? Oh, to 2045, well, that's the 20-year planning period, because the 20-year planning period is 2025, the date that we're supposed to adopt a new comprehensive plan.
No, I understand that, but I, I thought the county had given us the data for the full 20 years, but I see 20 years of data in the, in the planning tool.
So.
Are those just examples?
The, well, the, the one I gave you was a little bit of an example from last May that they completed, and so that doesn't include the most current or, or the, the allocations, as they're going to give them to us in January, um, but.
But it is a projection of what it was prior to what the current thing is going to be.
Yes.
So it kind of gives an idea.
Well, it has, um, they were estimating in May what this might be based upon the information that they had at this time. Now in January, when they sort of have the final allocations, they'll be able to sort of tune that up. Okay.
Maybe one other question, I'm more curious of, um, so we have to have them for those persons. Does La Center at the current time have, within its urban growth boundary, space for those type of addressing each of those needs?
Unfortunately, we don't know that either.
See, that's what this process is.
Right.
That's what comes out of this.
Yeah, because they have not given us the allocations, and they also have not told us yet how much vacant buildable land they, that they're, um, they've calculated that La Center has, which is kind of the other side of the equation. People, jobs on one side, and then, and then vacant land on the other, match those up to figure out, okay, do all those people fit on the amount of land that's left? So I wish we could give you an answer to that, but we, we still don't have that. Okay, so moving on to climate change and resiliency, which is a new element, all new element. That, uh, includes, is, uh, normally includes two sub-elements, as they're called, a greenhouse gas emissions reduction sub-element, and then a resiliency sub-element, um, and both of those together make up a climate change and resiliency element. However, La Center, um, because we have less than 6,000 population, are only required to do a resiliency sub-element, not a greenhouse gas emissions reduction sub-element. So, whereas a lot of, uh, the county itself and a lot of jurisdictions within it have to do sort of both of those things, La Center is only required to do the resiliency element. Resiliency, um, is the process of anticipating and preparing for and adapting to climate change, so you're basically looking at what the future conditions in La Center will be, um, and there's some modeling on this, you know, most particularly from, um, the University of Washington, that looks at things like increases in heat, rain and precipitation frequency. There's probably some other ones I'm forgetting, but it looks at those future, what are projected to be future climate conditions, and says, okay, what do we need to do to plan for that? That's, that's what the resiliency element will talk about, and there's, there's three sort of essential pieces of the resiliency element. One is identifying, protecting and enhancing natural areas to be more resilient. So for instance, stream corridors. Those are areas that are, you know, meant to accommodate habitat and floods and so forth adjacent to a stream. Could be looked at for enhancement or widening, for instance, to accommodate greater floods. Another example might be looking at areas, planting trees, being more proactive in planting trees to help reduce temperatures within Le Center. A second requirement of the resiliency sub-element is identifying, protecting and enhancing community resilience to climate change impacts. And then thirdly, addressing natural hazards created or aggravated by, by climate change. So those are kind of the three essential components. Now, we can go create a resiliency sub-element for you, a climate change and resiliency sub-element that goes in the comprehensive plan, and that's, that's what we're gonna be working with you on. But one other option is that Clark County, and I don't think that they know yet whether they're gonna do this, but Clark County could update their natural hazards mitigation plan to meet those requirements that I just, those three requirements that I just talked about. And if they updated their plan, then all of Le Center would have to do is, is adopt Clark County's updated natural hazards mitigation plan. So we'll be talking to the county about that to see what, what they're planning on doing with, with their natural hazard mitigation plan, or if we're going to create a set of policies, goals and policies in Le Center's comprehensive plan that, that addresses this. The final thing I just wanted to mention is that the city has entered into an inter-local agreement with the county. And the county has hired a consultant to process some of this climate and resiliency data, and they're gonna spit it out to sort of all of the jurisdictions that signed up for this, signed onto this inter-local agreement. It's a relatively good deal, because they're kind of just, like, they have a system, and they're gonna enter the information, and it's gonna spit it out for all of the jurisdictions. And so Le Center entered into that agreement, and I want to say that it was roughly about $5,000 to $6,000 for that consultant to do the work for Le Center. So we'll take that work once they're complete with it and, and work with you on the climate and resiliency element. So that's all I had on that. Can take any more questions or comments or whatever that, that you have?
Think we're good on questions?
Good.
Ethan, did you, so we covered through Section 3, which was the Housing for All Planning Tool, or was that? Let me look at the attachment.
Oh.
Sorry.
Attachment 3 or 3 dot? Attachment B, is that what you're looking at?
Yes, attachment.
Yeah, we did cover all of that. That was all, all part of 1.8.1.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you for that.
Okay.
Have a question on that tool. Column in there that is for PHT.
Can you identify a page?
If I look at the definition.
Permanent supportive housing, is that what you're?
Yeah, yeah, permanent supportive housing. PSH, there's a column in the tool for that, but there's also a column for non-PSH. I wasn't, it wasn't clear, there's not a definition for non-PSH, PSH, and I'm curious on what that term means.
Well, it's, yeah, so that's a good question. So the, the definition of permanent supportive housing is on page 13, we provided some definitions.
So does the non mean it's non-permanent, or it's?
Let me look at the tool really quick and see if I can decipher this. So, so the total is non-PSH plus PH, PSH. Is that right? No, that can't, sorry, you have the income, income bands, and then you have permanent supportive housing, and then you're not, non-permanent supportive housing. I don't know, we'll find an answer for you.
Be nice, there ought, probably ought to be a definition if we're gonna use that term in the tool.
Yeah, Alec may have some.
Commissioner Brock, so they have it by income band there? So 0 to 30% is extremely low income, and so there's gonna be permanent supportive housing under the extremely low income, and then just typical housing under the extremely low income band, like market rate housing. So that's distinguished from permanent supportive housing. And then next, you'd have your, your low income and then moderate income. So that's basically what it is. I don't think they give a good, true definition, but that's understanding from guidance.
Appreciate that clarification. Any other questions from the commissioners? All right, so I'm gonna have us roll into 1.82, and I know we've been out for a while, so we might have some, some updates, some heavy updates on the work plan and schedules.
Hold, hold, how about 191?
Oh, no, we're on 182, sorry, comprehensive plan.
Housing needs.
So, so 181, we went through Sections 1, 2, 3 with Attachment B?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine.
I'm sorry.
No, no, trust me, you, please, keep an eye on me. I need it, so, no, it's all good. I was gonna just hand that back over to staff.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Chair. So I'll be discussing the work plan and schedule tonight. As you kind of mentioned before, we've, it's been a minute since we touched on this topic, and we've gone through a couple of iterations before the Planning Commission prior to tonight, through the past year or so, as we've been working through the comp plan update, and it's about time to put, put into full drive this process. And we're, the purpose of us providing this is for your awareness, but also discuss the main changes to the work plan and schedule to ensure adequate and efficient review by staff, the Planning Commission and the City Council for the, for all the comprehensive plan elements and development regulations, and the updates for those, and for the adoption deadline, and make sure we cover all the requirements we need to by the adoption on June 30th, 2025, which is as required by GMA as Ethan just discussed. Also, we want to emphasize that the, this project's gonna be on a pretty tight schedule at this point. So there's gonna be limited time for contingency to accommodate for any delays. And this is primarily the reason for these changes to the comp plan, work plan and schedule. So discuss those in more detail. So the bulk of the changes is Phase 2 of our work plan, which is also tethered to our schedule. Formerly, the Phase 2 was split into two tasks. One task were the code updates, which we've done a couple of those, like the family daycare providers, manufactured homes. And then we had a second task, which was specifically for comp plan elements or the chapters of the comprehensive plan. Now we've consolidated these into two, or into one task, and reorganized by topic. So the code updates that were in Task 1 have been grouped with comp plan elements in Task 2 that most closely align with each other. So for an example, for the transportation element, we have some updates, code updates that are required for EV infrastructure and highways statewide significance, essentially I-5 here in the center. So we took that code update, lumped it with the transportation, just because it made sense to lump those, those together. And then essentially with the schedule part of this, we've updated the schedule to reflect that Phase 2 consolidation of the work plan in the general timeline of each topic area, so we'll go through land, land use, housing, transportation, capital facilities, utilities, environment, and so on. So that timeline will be about one to two months for staff to generate these updates for each topic area, followed by one to two months of Planning Commission meetings with staff revisions in there, and then one to two more months for council workshops and meetings, and with staff revisions in there as well. Yes.
Alec, can I interrupt? When you're going through this, are we then, as commissioners, wanting to see that code broken out where it'll show what the changes are coming down from the state, and then highlight it in yellow or something that says these are the specific things that we're going to need to say yea or nay or modify, is that?
Commissioner Hill.
It's gonna be, you're gonna be pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, most of the updates are gonna be pretty cut and dry. We'll make it pretty clear in our memos and in the draft code that this is why we are doing this, and it's because of a state requirement per an RCW or a WAC. But as we get more into the process, there might be some places here and there, we may need some Planning Commissioner input to just make it more piecemeal to specifically to Le Center. We haven't got quite that far in some of these topics. Like as we learned with the manufactured homes and family daycare providers, there's not a whole lot of wiggle room, and that's gonna be expected with most of this update process.
For me, it helps to have that identified and ferred out, so we'll, we'll know specifically that's, it helps us for me, it helps me focus on, that's what we're gonna do with. We're not gonna be, need to spend a lot of time talking about this or that, other adjacent items or so on, but be able to try to zero in on those and then be able to check them off, give ourselves a schedule. We gotta make a decision on this, what way are we gonna go? And, and, oh, that's done, move on to the next one. Is that their plan?
That's essentially our plan, and then that made me think as well with the comprehensive plan part of it, that's more the policymaking side, and that's definitely more of a side that Planning Commission would have bigger input on, because those are just bigger, broader policies. I mean, there's some compliance that we'll have to make sure they're the right language or addressing the right topic areas. But again, you can kind of piece that more into the vision you want Le Center to be. I don't know if Ethan has anything else to add to that effect.
I think that there's, one of the points we want to make, I guess two points. One point, the first point is that Alec made is that it's a tight schedule, so we're trying to reorganize the work plan and the schedule by topic. Rather than what we were doing before was, we had the, we were trying to get as much of the code updates done as we could last, sorry, this year, and then we're gonna move into comp plan updates this coming year. Now what we're gonna do is we're gonna pair the code updates and the comprehensive plan updates together by topic. So that's the first point. The second point is that it, we're gonna have sort of a renewed focus on what the state is requiring us to do, so you know, we're gonna, probably 80% or more, or maybe 90 or 100% of what we do is really gonna be because of what the state is requiring, and then we might pick up a few kind of adjacent code updates, for instance, that we need to make anyways for consistency and that sort of stuff. But basically, this is gonna be largely driven by what the state is, is requiring us to do.
Thanks.
Any other questions before I move forward?
Are, are you gonna go to Attachment A next?
Yeah, we can go to Attachment A.
Because I got a question on that. I understand how you're gonna group these by topic now, or really comp plan sections. And scroll down to Phase 2.
I think that's on the second page, the attachment. Yeah, there we go.
Let me just use that example. So you mentioned transportation. So the transportation, the transportation element, you've got a Planning Commission draft, and then you've got a Planning Commission work group, another Planning Commission workshop on Draft 1 and comment period. So is, is included in that, those drafts, the code changes and the comp plan changes?
Yes.
Okay. And then maybe using that same one for an example. So the Planning Commission is gonna have a workshop with Draft 1 in May. We get 14 days to comment, and then the hold for Planning Commission Draft 2, I don't, I see that hold in there several times. I don't understand the hold.
Basically, as we go through this process, we're gonna have various holds, and then we're gonna lump a couple of these topics together into a second draft. So you have transportation, and I believe there's a Parks and Rec that we're lumping it with, and then maybe another element, and we'll have a whole draft 2 going together. And basically, it's gonna be at a point where you're comfortable with your comments.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I understand, but like a land use element of map, there's a, a Draft 1, Comment Period Draft 2, and then Hold for Planning Commission Draft 2. So it wasn't clear what the difference between Planning Commission Draft 2 in March and a Hold for Planning Commission Draft 2 in April.
One second, I'm pulling it up just to get my understanding on it. Well, he's doing that. I think what we're, what we're trying to do here is, is say that there's only one adoption of the comprehensive plan, right? So we're not gonna adopt each element separately and bring it forward through the Planning Commission, the City Council for each time, so.
It's a placeholder then.
It's like you're batching.
So after each of these goes through a Planning Commission, City Council process, then we sort of set it aside, move on to the next thing. In reality, these are sort of overlapping things, you know, so you're gonna have Planning Commission meetings where you're discussing two topics at a time. So that's, that's sort of the very general answer about what the hold means, and sometimes you're holding because you're, it's going to adoption, and sometimes you're holding because it's getting grouped with another package of things for, for a later workshop or something.
Okay, I understand, good. That sounds efficient.
Yeah.
And that, and really saying at that point, that action is completed, we're just putting it on the side, and we'll connect it later.
Right.
But we're done, we're done, we've done our work on it, we're done with it, move it on.
Put a big staple through it.
That'll be adopted.
Yeah. Because adoption has overhead.
Yeah, and the adoption's gonna happen in April 2025. So we'll be going through this starting spring this coming year, and then going through all next year doing this.
Oh, goodie.
And then April next year, we're gonna start the adoption process. So it's gonna be, as we're saying, this schedule's pretty tight, and it's pretty loaded, and there's not gonna be a lot of leeway to push the schedule any further. And again, it's gonna be mostly cut and dry information, but it's gonna be a lot.
Well, the other, the other thing just to highlight here is that we're gonna be coming to you with drafted elements and drafted code at the first meeting, right? So our prior sort of protocol was to sort of spend month, one month, giving you sort of the research on a certain topic. You know, here's what these experts say type of thing, and then the next month, we come to you with the drafted code, and then there's some months of discussion and adoption type of thing. We're gonna sort of reverse that a little bit and just come to you with a completed draft of this stuff, which we hope is as close to ready as possible. That's sort of one thing we're hoping will save time, we'll see.
Drafted statement, but still open for addition or comment.
Correct.
Yeah, and we can ask about the research and things like that, so.
Yeah, and we have built-in comment, comment periods for the Planning Commission after they've seen the first draft. Then they have 14 days to comment, and then we'll take those comments and turn around and have it prepared for the second draft for review.
Yeah, I guess.
So those 14 days of comment is, we've received the information, we comment on it, but it's not in a meeting per se. It's just, of course, on.
On your own time, you can take it home. I mean, you can bring comments to us always in the meeting, right? But we're giving you 14 days between some meetings to look at all of it and write comments and submit them. Then we, that 14-day period allows us to sort of corral the comments and, and then adjust the draft. So we come back to you the next meeting with an adjusted, with a revised draft, draft.
As long as we have the opportunity to have those comment discussions in here, because I think there is benefit for us bouncing ideas off each other in here, rather than just going off in the quiet of our bedroom and writing. Because I think there is benefit for us bouncing ideas off each other in here, rather than just going off in the quiet of our bedroom and writing comments.
You're saying in addition, wasn't you?
Yeah. No, I encourage everyone to speak up. And, and if we needed to, we could always roll over to like a, like a work group if it's something detailed or.
And we have some of those plugged in here. And we could potentially plug in some more too, but.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Just by procedure, in those kinds of comment, is that something that goes out by email to the staff or email to the total group?
The comment periods?
Yeah.
Well, so once we present draft one to you in a meeting, then you have fourteen days following that meeting. So we'll basically tell you that at the meeting. And again, we're not trying to discourage discussion or anything like that, but it's more about just trying to be as efficient as possible because we have a tight.
Will I get to see Dennis's comments at the end of that fourteen day period?
We can probably figure out a way to, to make that happen, to upload them somewhere so everybody can see everyone else's comments.
To avoid a quorum.
But at a minimum, at the following meeting, we'll come with a revised draft with everybody's comments addressed.
I've got a question for Jamie. For me, it would be helpful. I don't, I'm not on our city website or email all every day, I'm just not. I look at it primarily, I look at it when, because it also has it on my lap, on my desktop. It would be somehow, for me, it would be great to know that, hey, by the way, we've sent you something, take a look. And that could be via text or something, way that you can just text us with a message as this, say, check your email, there's a, there's a, there's something regarding comprehensive plan. If you could think about that, if you would.
Is there any reason you can't use our personal email address?
I'll need to double check that. I don't know the rules about that, but I'm definitely happy to do whatever. If it's sending or giving you a call or shooting you a text, that's fine.
So one text to you and you shoot it out.
Yeah, Jamie, you can use me too for that, because I already bug these guys for the, to see if we have quorum every month, so.
That would be helpful.
Shoot you.
Give you an assignment. But I'm like Dennis, I very rarely check my city email.
Right. Me too.
So we can try and get a better answer for you on that. And I know that, that Commissioner Brock has, we've used his personal email in the past. I guess the one, my understanding of that issue is that because Washington has a very open public records system, some other states do as well. But if for some reason, there was a public records request that included some correspondence or whatever that you had, your email would not be limited to just that email that came through a public system. They could search your entire email. So that's the, that's my understanding of the issue. We can probably see if there's a nuance to, a legal nuance to that, but that's what I've been told.
If you gotta, if you gave us a pointer, then that, it just says, go look at your city email. Do you have it on your laptop, on your home, on your desktop or your email? Yeah, so my, you have it probably the same way. It's already set up. So if you just somehow send us a text and say, Dennis, look at your email, you know? It's just that quick, you know, nothing, don't need more, good morning, however. That would just, to me, that would be very helpful.
Okay, yeah, that shouldn't be a problem at all.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm in the city email all the time, so. I don't have an excuse because I'm like the tech guy. All right, where are we at with?
I just have a few, couple updates left on the work plan and schedule. If that's, if we've answered questions on phase two and how that's been a shakeout. Next few items are just that we updated the HNAS schedule, which is the Housing Needs Analysis and Strategy. We initially had that on the work plan and schedule to be basically done with draft by now. But that has been pushed back a bit. So we'd be presenting that first draft to you, as I'll be discussing later tonight with you all on. And then we'll be presenting a second draft to you in January on the HNAS.
Okay, so if you send that to us, you're gonna have a leading paragraph that says, we sent this to you, here's what you want, we want you to look at.
It's in your packet for tonight, the thing that he's talking about.
I think Dennis is talking about the reminder kind of thing.
Yeah, he's talking to Jamie about.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I can work with you, Jamie, too, to figure out how to articulate the, here's what you're getting, here's what we want.
So does, I can probably wait, but does this housing needs analysis and strategy, as you've got it drafted, does that become the housing element in the comp plan?
That's just the data backing up the how, the housing policies. So it becomes the sort of reasoning for the policies that we're coming up with. Just like when you do a capital, a transportation plan, you might have a transportation system plan that's sort of an appendix to the comprehensive plan that looks at all the modes, all the future traffic, all that kind of stuff. But it's not the housing element itself, it was background update.
And then just a couple other points, and then we can move on to the HNAS. After we take some additional questions as necessary. We, to the schedule and the work plan, we've also added a joint planning commission and council meeting on January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. So it'd be the second Wednesday or the fourth Wednesday of January, the city council. And this will be a joint discussion to discuss major GMA topics. As Ethan has brought forth to you tonight, the population, employment, and housing allocations. Hoping we'll have those in time for that. The housing needs analysis and strategy. A summary of our tabling event, we tabled at the tree lighting ceremony. This, not last Sunday, but the Sunday before, so provide a summary of how that went. And then an open house reminder, and that leads up to the date for our first open house. We have tentatively scheduled this for Thursday, February eighth, twenty twenty four. And this will be our first public open house on the comprehensive plan update. That's still not final, but we put that in the schedule and are, are starting to plan for that here shortly. And that concludes my presentation on this topic for the lead into the HNAS. So any other questions?
No, thank you.
So is that joint meeting then at five thirty prior before?
It's at five thirty, yes.
And that sounds like a lot to discuss in an hour.
I forwarded you all the calendar invite, so I don't know if you got it or not. It's in your city email. And I believe if needed, we can start the regular meeting at six thirty and then come back to the joint workshop. If we need extra time after that hour, between five thirty and six thirty.
Okay.
We're gonna try and get it done in an hour. You're right, it's a lot to discuss, but it's basically kind of the overviews that we're giving you, like we're doing tonight. It's not to necessarily get into a policy discussion, at least not at that point, about, you know, this is what we should do, or that's what we should do. Type of thing, that'll come later, but it's just kind of overviewing this stuff like we're doing for you right here.
All right, sounds good. Any other questions for Alec on anything related to one dot eight two? All right, moving on then into new business and one dot nine one, the HNAS, is that what we call it?
You call it whatever you want. It's easier to say HNA for me, but it's harder to say HNAS for whatever reason.
Yeah.
I catch myself not saying it right.
It might be easier to say the trapped housing needs assessment.
So tonight, we are delivering you the draft HNAS to you guys for review. So the main comments and revisions for the HNAS will be discussed at the January planning commission meeting. So essentially, tonight, we're delivering this to you and then providing some high level findings from this and then like the background of it. But staff is requesting to provide, for the planning commission to provide comments by Friday, December twenty second. So that'll give you guys some time to review the HNAS, since this was provided about a week ago and it's a pretty lengthy document. But we want to give you some time to review, and then we will address your comments over the holiday break and then have it turned around for our next planning commission meeting in January. So again, we're requesting that comment by December twenty second, which is next Friday.
So what, what form would you prefer those in?
I think email would be fine.
Well, I guess, I've already started commenting on it. I've, I've been doing, since the PDF, I've been doing it in Acrobat Reader and with a little comment block. Does that work?
That's fine, yeah.
And to whom, I mean, sent to you?
I would direct it to Jamie.
Yeah, just send the comments to me.
Distribute it.
We'll take care of it.
And you guys know, but just don't copy anyone else on it, just so we don't form a quorum in email. So you can talk to Jamie all you, all you like. We, we can't talk to each other all we want.
And then, so just the background of the HNAS. As required by the GMA, staff have been working on the draft HNAS to evaluate existing demographic and housing conditions, to identify future housing needs, to serve all economic and demographic segments of the community. Also, within the HNAS, it will calculate the needed land capacity for all types of housing. Again, we're still pending some of this population allocation and housing allocations from the county. So there's some gaps in our draft HNAS as it stands, but we're hoping. And it might not happen, sounds like if they're providing those allocations in January, might not have that in the second draft. So we'll do as much as we can up until the second draft in January, and maybe we'll get the allocations prior to work it in. But we're working with the county as we're drafting this up, but we have significant data within it at this point. Additionally, the HNAS identifies how many units of different types or for different income segments are needed in a community. And it'll identify gaps between the diversity of housing needs and the supply of housing currently available. And I'll show some figures here in a minute, just to have some visuals. And the HNAS needs to consider how a community is changing over time. It serves as the foundation for informed policymaking and recommendations, recommendations for the comprehensive plan and to guide development regulations in a form where and what kind of housing will be developed in the center. So essentially, this huge document is a bunch of data that we're gonna be using to frame or be the foundation to, for our housing element of the comprehensive plan, but also to comply with those GMA mandates as Ethan discussed earlier tonight.
Excuse me, Alec. So we're gonna work on that and, and get your comments by the twenty second. When we actually get the hard data from the county, how does that impact that then?
There's a couple of sections in there that we have, and you'll see as you look in the document, it says, pending population allocations to the county or employment allocations to the county. It will impact portions of the analysis because we won't know. For example, there's an area that we, we have an idea of what housing gaps there are for different, or income types, so for like extremely low, very low, and so on and so forth. But we don't have the population housing allocation from the county to sign or really know what that gap is. We know the current gap, but we don't know the future gap that there would be to accommodate for.
Based on that, then what we're looking at, have you then identified that, don't worry about this or this or this because we're waiting for?
Yeah, it's, it's in brackets saying, there's, there's just no data there, and it's in bold in the, in the draft analysis.
We'll have to somehow figure it out.
No, we don't expect that, no.
Okay, thank you.
And then Jamie, if you could go to attachment A, and have you jump through some graphs. So I'll just tell you the page number and we'll find our way through. So if you start on page thirteen. So as you see in our HNAS, there's a key summary section. But I'm just gonna show you some graphs based upon, are those key summaries or key takeaways from our HNAS? So the first one is obvious that we all knows La Center is growing fast. So here's.
Which page number and the actual PDF is it?
Thirteen.
I'm, I'm sorry, down at the bottom?
Oh, at the, the top.
Documents page number?
The PDF document number, if you go to the top there, yeah. There you go. So yeah, here's the example of, of La Center growing fast. So this is from nineteen seventy through twenty twenty three. Obvious here that La Center is growing fast. During this timeframe, La Center had an annual growth rate of four point nine five percent, which is pretty high. And beyond nineteen ninety, that growth rate was even higher. And if you go to page fourteen.
Before you leave that, just scroll up one or two lines there. So right there, it says, as seen in figure one, the last seventy years from nineteen ten, well, the draft doesn't go back to nineteen ten. See the words there, as seen in figure one, the first seventy years, nineteen ten to nineteen ninety, are relatively slow growth.
I think that may have been data that was included at one point, but then we readjusted and it wasn't caught. So that was, that's just a scrivener's error. And then if we go to page fourteen, this is just comparing La Center with Richfield and Clark County, just growth over time. And if you look at these two different, the table there and then the graph below, La Center's pretty much on pace with Richfield and Clark County with growth. Richfield's the green there, which Richfield is obviously growing very fast. La Center's that dark blue on the left, and Clark County's that teal or aqua on the right. So generally, La Center's growing faster than the county, except for a year or two here or there, but not quite as fast as Richfield, but still growing pretty fast. And then another key finding is La Center's becoming slightly younger and diversifying by race. So if you go to page seventeen, so this is La Center by age groups. This chart is a little deceiving because on one hand, it looks like the blue is on the left, the blue on the left is twenty ten, and then the green on the right is twenty twenty one. And then these are different age groups by like four or five year age groups within La Center. So on the one side, it shows basically the younger population groups are increasing in La Center. And like young adult years, but not kids necessarily, because that age group's decreasing. But on the other end, older adults or seniors, that population group is generally increasing in La Center. So there's younger groups and middle aged people, those groups are decreasing, while it's young adults and older people, seniors are increasing. And then if you go to page, or scroll down to the table four there, this shows the median age in La Center, and it's decreased. If you look everywhere else at Richfield and Clark County, it's actually increased over time during this timeframe from two thousand ten to twenty twenty one. And it's, it's just a slight decrease, so that just may be because one possible explanation is just housing may be becoming, becoming a little more expensive in La Center. So people with younger children and those middle aged people tend to not live in La Center because housing's more and the cost of living's higher. So you have more senior population or the young adult population living here that can afford living on their own. Those are just assumptions, not main key takeaways that you may get from that. The next key finding is the housing supply is focused on homeowners and larger households. So if you go to page twenty, this shows household counts by tenure. So tenure is either renters, renter households or owner households. This shows about eighty percent of La Center's owner households and twenty percent, about twenty percent are owners. And then if you go to page twenty one.
Sorry, one real quick interjection on that is in the paragraph above this chart, just for comparison, Clark County is sixty five percent owner households and thirty five percent renter. So La Center is, you know, has a very high ownership rate.
Maybe this isn't apropos at this point, but as I just look at it, it just looks like all that I see being built really are single family dwelling places. All right, so that's increasing all the more.
And it's also interesting that you get into the income that we can't afford those houses. And it's also interesting that when you get into the income, that we can't afford those houses. A good percentage of the population by the analysis says we can't afford them.
Yeah, I did notice that.
Yeah, and I'll go over a couple of these as we, as I get further into this. If we go to page 21, this just shows number of people per household. So La Center generally has higher or larger households compared to like Clark County. So there's more two, three, or four-person households in La Center. Again, probably you can correlate that with the single-family homes. And also just more of the housing stock is owner occupied than renter occupied as well. So there's some connections you can make there. And then the next key point is La Center is an affluent community. So if we go to page 22, this just shows income, La Center median income. So La Center has a median income, which is the blue versus green is Clark County. For all households, La Center's median income is $91,000, and that's a bit higher than Clark County's $82,000, I believe. And then same for family households in La Center versus Clark County. It's, I think, La Center's slightly higher there. The only time La Center's smaller is for non-family households. So for non-family essentially just means people living together that are unrelated. That group's significantly lower than Clark County. But otherwise, La Center is significantly higher than Clark County for income, average income. And then the next item has to do with employment. La Center is a commuter community and lacks high-earning jobs. So we go to page 28, and I'll compare this with Clark County below. But so here, the data only provides three income categories for employment. And so essentially, if you're making more than 3,300 a month, that's about $40,000 a year. And then there's the group that's 1,250 to 3,300 a month, that's $15,000 to $40,000 a year. And then there's the group that's 1,250 and below, that's below $15,000 a year. If you look at the next graph below, it's Clark County. And comparatively, there's significantly more jobs in Clark County versus La Center that pay $40,000 or more. And then La Center also has a large group or more jobs that pay $15,000 or less or less than Clark County. So essentially, that there's just a lack of higher-paying jobs in La Center. And then once you look at page 36, this is the inflow-outflow analysis of jobs in La Center. So there's 766 total jobs in La Center. This graph shows that of those 766 jobs, 719 of those jobs are employed by people that live outside of La Center. So they commute here to work. Only 47 of those jobs of the 766 are people that live and work in La Center. But the remaining 1,300 workers in La Center leave La Center to work elsewhere. So this shows that essentially, almost no one in La Center stays and works here. All the workers come here to work, and then the workers that live here go away to work. And then have two more main points, and then I'll be essentially done with the HNAS. The next point is La Center's housing supply lacks a range of options as Commissioner Jones has discussed, and is increasingly unaffordable. So if you go to page 38, this shows the number of units by housing type in La Center in 2010 and 2021. In 2010, single-family detached had an 88% share of the total housing stock, and that decreased to 84.3% in 2021. It's still a significant portion of the total housing stock in La Center. You see a good increase in single-family attached because there used to not be any back in 2010. Now there's some now in 2021, and a slight increase in multifamily as well and duplexes.
What is the source of, or you probably tell me, okay, because that comes from the census?
From the census.
Do we plan to update those based upon realities on the ground?
Yes, we actually received some data from Jamie today for the housing permits issued for 2023. So that will also include the Riverside Apartments, because that's 144 units.
144 apartments.
Yeah, so that will be included into this. And that was recommended in the Housing Guidance from Commerce to use existing on-the-ground permitting data to update this.
Good.
So we will do that accordingly. Sorry, just out of curiosity though, what is the single-family attached in town? I'm having a hard time thinking of.
Apartments?
Well, I feel like that would fall under multifamily, three or more units. So typically, single-family attached would either be.
Well, there are townhomes. We've got several areas with townhomes.
Like the duplex or townhome, the quadplex or something?
Duplex, triplex, it's quads.
What duplex is separate?
But what I don't know is, are those rentals or owned? So that would be the distinction here would be rentals would be multifamily and owned would be single-family attached.
It says there's 67 of them, I believe.
I find that hard to believe.
I'm just not picturing where those are at. Maybe they're scattered throughout town.
Yeah, they are.
Okay, but there isn't one development that's single, because I couldn't think of that.
I'd be surprised if there were that many.
And it's important to note, it's important to note, the 2021 is not US Census like data. It's a survey, ACS survey. So it's a five-year survey, and so there's some discrepancies with that data sometimes. So we can look into that data set, and it might have a huge variation in it as well. So we can look into that as well. But there is value of having like on-the-ground data as well for this kind of analysis, which we're gathering some of that.
Send Jamie around town and count all of them.
That sounds fun.
Go into GIS and see if they're owned or rented.
Rented. And then if we go to page 40, it shows housing values in La Center. Green again is La Center and blue is Clark County. And so you see La Center has a pretty high share of homes that are $300,000 to $499,000 and also $500,000 to just under $1 million. Both of those share percentage of the housing stock is higher in La Center than Clark County. So you see that, again, this is from 2021. So La Center has quite a few homes that are in the higher end of values versus Clark County. And then I think if you scroll down to page 41, and this is just a, this is another data set, it's from Zillow, 2023. So this looks at housing from this 35th percentile to 65th percentile range. So it's kind of an average or median, but they have a disclaimer, you can't use it as a true average or median. But this shows, like, I believe November through, November of last year through January of this year, La Center was approaching about $650,000 for housing between that 35th and 65th percentile range. And during this whole timeframe from 20, January 2020 through up until basically now, La Center is about $100,000 higher than Clark County with using this Zillow estimate. It's just another data set to look at for, just for this analysis. And then the last key point is there's gaps. La Center has gaps in its housing supply for certain types and income ranges. So if you go to page 57, thank you, Jamie. This shows the units available at the affordability level. So there's that extremely low income, low income, or extremely low, very low, low and moderate income housing. The blue are the units available as of now for those income groups. And then green are the number of actual households in La Center at that income level. So you can see here for the extremely low income level, there's 30 households that are within that income group, but there's no housing or units in La Center that would make housing affordable for that group.
So these are houses that people that are in that income range live in?
Yeah. And then you can see the same for very low income. There's 101 households in that income group here in La Center, but there's only 27 homes in La Center that would actually be affordable for that income group.
So understanding the data, so there's 30 households of extremely low income, but there's no housing for them, so where are they?
That would be affordable. And affordable per the guidance is, so they have different terms, but affordable is essentially if housing is 30% or less your monthly income. And then it's cost burden if it's 30% to 50%. And then it's severely cost-burdening housing if it's greater than 50% of your monthly income. So essentially, like we were saying, there's no affordable housing for this group. So those households are living here, but what this is saying is that they're spending more than 30% of their gross income on housing, right? And so I think generally what the research shows is that people then start giving up other things. They cut back on transportation, they cut back on food, they cut back on clothing, or they find ways to get cheaper clothes, cheaper food, cheaper transportation so that they can live here. But that makes the housing unaffordable to them by that definition. Any other questions before I move on? And then if we go to attachment C, we don't have to spend too much time on this topic.
Well, before we move on, in here, I've noticed that the number of dwelling units that we think we have in town differs in a couple of areas.
The what?
The number of dwelling units that are in town. As an example, up in the findings, there's a number of 1148. In paragraph 411, it's 1451. And I would encourage us to get a number and stick with it. Because that becomes very, as you know, becomes very important when we start projecting our needs. The other thing I see is we're using, several places we've used 3.02 people per dwelling unit. But that doesn't match the population and the number of dwelling units. And again, that number is very important because that's going to be used to project how many houses you need, depending on how many people you're putting in those houses. So we need to check that. And it's interesting that 1148 number is less than the 2015 number we had in our last comp plan. So there's some, there's some issues there. Well, if you go to the findings in this section, in this append, or attachment, we say there's 1148 dwelling units. Well, down on page 28, we say there's 1451. And in.
I think those come from our data sources. I think the 1148 is from the US ACS data, survey data, and the 1,400 is from the state.
Yeah.
So, but we do need to be consistent.
We ought to be consistent all the way through. And just be aware that in our 2016 comp plan, in 2015, we said we had 1176.
Interesting. They were probably using state data for the comp plan back then, so we'll be consistent and use the state data instead of the ACS, ACS survey data, because it's just less certain.
Because again, that population, number dwelling units become very important when we start projecting our needs. Because it's all based upon where we're starting from.
Thank you. We've added those to our notes, and we'll be, with our second draft, we'll be more consistent with that. Okay.
The other thing, and I don't know exactly, let me see where's it at. But we, several places we talk about, we have an average density of 4.3 units per acre. And I think that comes from the BLR in 2022. And I have a hard time believing that because 4.3 means that our average lot size is 10,130. And that's clearly not the case in the city. And so again, that would be one place I would hope we would, you know, apply some reality from on the ground.
Yeah, we're pending data from the county again, because they, we'll be using the BLR and the vacant lands, billable, or vacant, billable lands model to update with that data. But essentially, that's data we're getting from the county on that.
Okay, I've got more comments, but I'll send them to you.
Thank you. And then quickly, attachment C. So staff are, and this is kind of unrelated to HNAS, but it is because it's the overall comp plan process. But staff is tracking various data points within each chapter of the comprehensive plan that will be updated. And so essentially, these are items such as updating the capital facilities inventory, updating the Parks and Trails inventory maps, and also the inventory of historic structures in the city from the last comprehensive plan. So we're just going through, and we have this table of all the various different pieces of the comp plan that had various data that we're tracking. It's not necessarily tethered to like the HNAS or capital facilities plan. Just to track and make sure we get those data updated and get the sources we need in time to make it, to do these updates. So we're just running this by to you, showing that we're tracking this information, and we'll be updating accordingly.
Do you know when we're going to save the Parks and Recreation Plan? I know you guys aren't working on it.
I believe we're bringing the draft to you in January for that.
And then just touching on next steps, again, staffers requesting that the planning commission review the draft HNAS and provide those formal comments by Friday to December 22nd. And then we'll be incorporating those comments and then other identified updates as we have pointed out for the next draft. And we'll present those findings to you and that new draft to you at the January Planning Commission meeting. And then I'll take any other questions that you may have.
So you don't want any comments on the HA, HAPT, the tool?
Not the tool, just the HNAS. The tool is just like a tool the county provided us, and they inputted all the data. And that was, like Ethan said, they provided that back in May, and they, it was just a rough understanding what they had on it. But it's going to be more finite as we get those allocations.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good to go. From the commissioners, any other comments in section 1.91?
Well, it's obvious to me that all the new legislative dictates are going to really expand this from what we have done in the past. It's going to be a lot more complicated. And if we're really going to follow through, there's going to be a lot of code changes that we're going to need to be doing to incorporate those lower-income type of housing products.
Yeah, I think that's why you guys probably adopted that, kind of the batching of the presenting, doing the research and kind of doing that legwork upfront.
Well, but I assume that, that we're not going to be doing code changes now that allow us to do high-density housing, if that's something we want to do. That might be a policy in the comp plan that we would then go react to, am I right?
I don't know. It depends on what, how the allocations settle out and whether we need to figure out how to accommodate more housing within La Center or not, in concert with the state mandates to provide enough capacity for that type of housing. So, I mean.
mean, the M D R code right now allows for apartments, right? So one thought might be that you have these M D R zones that are already able to accommodate that type of housing. And depending on how many vacant acres there are, you may or may not need more land zoned M D R.
You may not, you may not need a higher density.
You may, may or may not.
Yeah, I understand. Can be a lot of work.
Good comment, though. Any other questions, comments before we close out one dot nine one? Okay. Thanks, Alec. I appreciate that. That was, that was quite a bit. Let's roll into reports, the community development staff report.
I'll just back in time for that one. So
We saved it for you.
That's right. So number one and thirty-seven, the two subdivisions that are going on Lockwood, Meadows and East's View respectively, are still under construction. Lockwood, they're starting up some work, cement treating the roadways so that they can continue to work on that through the winter. And the, excuse me, East's View project is continuing their utility installation currently. So we're keeping a close eye, obviously, on those projects as it comes to erosion and runoff, especially with the heavy rains that we've had here. You probably have noticed the work that especially Lockwood Meadows is doing there right along the roadway and working on making that storm connection. So we're looking forward to them doing that so that they're, have a little bit more pipe capacity to, to deal with some of these winter rains. Let's see here, what else do we have? Number four, Minute Management, continuing to work with them on some of their final building permits that they had deferred submittal on. And then Jamie's been working with them recently here on their signs for the Shell Station as well. Number sixty-six on your map, the Barnhart property, they have completed their ten percent petition to annex and are scheduled to go to council for the sixty percent petition and public hearing on January tenth. And then finally, number sixty-nine on the map, apartment here, they completed a preliminary short plat to break a single lot into two. And I think they're working on their final plat for that as we speak. Happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Question on thirteen, Stephen Hillside. Do you know whether or not the homes that they're putting foundations in are spec homes or sold homes?
From what I understand, talking to new tradition staff, they do not do spec homes. They only do pre-sold. So those would be pre-sold.
Okay.
And any insight into what Minute Management has, what they're going to tackle next?
Next up, we're eagerly awaiting their, I guess, resubmittal. I think it would be on the hotel building permit. So we understand that the hotel is the next phase that they're going to proceed with. And from what they've indicated, they plan on submitting that sometime in January.
Do you have a sense for why this is dragging on so much? Why they haven't opened up?
I don't. They haven't shared any particular reason. They kind of, you know, we, earlier this year, they were thinking summer to drop that hotel permit. And then they recently, recently said January. So, but I can't say for sure why that is.
They're not waiting for something from the city?
No, no, we're waiting. We're, we're waiting on them at this point for, for the next permit application.
And then the piece of property to the south across the center road out there, is that still, we're still thinking hotel there also?
That's what we understand. So we had a pre-application conference for that a while back, earlier this summer. And we've been in communication with them a few times and had some sort of follow-up discussions on that. And our understanding is that they're working on a submittal right now for that project.
That's a strange piece of property because it seems like at this point, the pile of concrete and asphalt is growing.
Seems to get bigger and bigger.
It's getting bigger and bigger. I'm wondering if they're going to be doing something. Why is it not getting smaller? But anyways, it's certainly still at Isor, but he's just really.
Is that on the south side of the?
Correct. Yep.
Still at the corner from the Shell.
Yes. Yeah, we're looking forward to something besides that being there.
It's growing because it's being watered.
I get it. Occasionally, they pretty much say, well, can't you as planning commissioner do something about that mess up there? Unfortunately not. They say, oh, go talk to Brian, you know.
Talk to Jamie.
I don't even say that because I know that you're going to have to.
But we have, you know, they fall under the junction code. So we've been working with them on how to navigate through that code and meet all the specific requirements on that site and for the, the project that they're looking to do. And so I think we're
No, is that also anticipated to be a hotel?
Yeah, I think they were also looking at a hotel. I can't remember the Marriott, was it? I think. And then
Was it a courtyard?
Yeah, I think it was a courtyard by Marriott and then like a Starbucks or some other sort of coffee shop, I think. Drive-through coffee slash cafe on site there.
What about the property on the north side of the road?
That is owned by the tribe and we haven't officially heard or unofficially heard. We've only heard rumors, so we can't really say what the plan is there. But they've definitely been cleaning up the site and, you know, removing the existing structures. So we're, we're just watching.
That's the barn or the?
The barn, yeah.
Yeah.
You got milk?
Yeah. Yes. Any other questions for staff on the community development report?
I know it's getting shorter.
We're working through stuff.
Yeah, yeah, stuff's getting knocked out. All right, I will roll into planning commissioner comments. I'm going to start at this side with Commissioner Jones.
No comment. Good work.
Yes, a lot, a lot of work.
A lot of work.
And I might be wrong. This is my one comment. Commissioner Hill, is tomorrow an important day for you? I think there's a birthday tomorrow.
There used to be.
The twelfth.
Big eight, too.
Yes, yes. So I just wanted to wish Commissioner Hill happy birthday. And that was my only comment.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for the reminder.
That's why I saw those median age thirty-nine and so I'm going, those are my grandkids.
Commissioner Hill, any comments?
Good meeting. Thank you.
Sure.
Not Brock? Yeah, three things. You know, you and I talked about our rules of procedure relative to the, to the alternate voting. Did you get any, any other feedback on that besides what you shared with me on the lawyer?
Yes, that's a, that's a really good question. Long story short on that, we had Bronson look at the code. We had Maria look at the code. And it could be, literally it conflicts. The code conflict, as you pointed out as well. And so Brian found code. Was it state code that?
Yeah, so there's, there's state code, there's our local code, and then our, our procedures. And we have sort of two versions of those floating around, one that has the alternate and one that is not. I think the one with the alternate is more recent than the other. But the discussion is, you know, whether we want to have the commission revisit that and make the alternate a full-fledged member. And so I think that was kind of the internal discussion. And so we're leading in that direction and figuring out sort of when that happens and how, so that we don't end up with, you know, potential even split vote, I think is, is kind of where we're at right now.
So, and, you know, and the reason I brought this up earlier is I remember when I was an alternate, we would always have discussion about, is the alternate a voting member tonight? And it was always whether it was contingent upon whether that alternate was there to fill the quorum. And do you remember it that way?
Yeah.
And so, you know, our, our rules of procedure are, are not very clear on that. And I think we need to make them clear to avoid that issue that you're talking about.
Yeah. And I think, and I think the way we were leaning, I had gone to Bronson about this, is that we would adopt a different rules of procedure. And, and then in the interpretation, it looked like it could go either way, where the alternate could vote. And then the other one, the other way it read was if there wasn't a quorum. But then I think the dilemma is Commissioner Jones would almost never get a vote because that would mean there was only two of us here. So, I mean, because we're, three is a quorum. And so, I mean, it'd have to be like really slim pickings for you to, to have a vote. So then we were leaning towards just not having an alternate and that everyone that's here is a full commissioner.
You know, and back when, when I was an alternate, you know, the alternates, I think there were two of us, we were always encouraged and did participate in all the discussion. It's just that we wouldn't vote unless we were filling that quorum role.
Right.
And I remember one night, we had a discussion, okay, is it you or me that's going to be the, the guy filling that role because we were both needed.
Wow. Yeah. And I was, I was concerned that past voting, you know, was done improperly. But I, I think, you know, even the way it could be read, it seemed to go either way. And I, I think it's just better to just clean it all up. And Brian, I'll work with you on that, like how to bring that to, with, with the agenda being as full as it was tonight. I didn't want to add that to this month's agenda.
If you expand it, you're saying expand it to six members you're talking to, is that what you're saying?
No, I think what we discussed is if there was a resignation, we would bring the alternate on permanently and then just make it five. Or so it'd be an odd number.
Yeah. So the, the next time that there's a vacancy, then we would, if the alternate was interested in filling that vacancy, we would appoint them to that position. And then we would do it, and then we would update our, our meeting parliamentary procedures to remove that alternate position.
Yeah, I think we were just doing away with the alternate altogether.
And to just have five regular members vote and participate at all meetings.
But I think, but I think what we'll do is we'll, we'll put the language together. And I think we have a say in it. So we could, we could vote that, we could vote that in and then it would go to the powers that be to, to make it official. But good comment. Thanks for, I was going to sidebar with folks about that, but.
Okay, the, the second comment has to do with Councilmember Casper's comment on the twenty-seventh of September. Did, did you get any insight into that?
I have reached out to him and I have yet to get an answer back.
I, I, I still find that very concerning.
Yes, absolutely. I might ask you for phone number or something. Emails, city emails not probably the best way. Well, it hasn't worked thus far, so.
And the last thing is I'd like to understand what it means when the planning commission votes not to forward something to the city council.
My understanding is that the planning commission votes to recommend something to council for approval or disapproval, not whether it's forwarded to the council. So if you vote to basically endorse a set code, then staff presents that code to council and presents that planning commission recommended adoption of this piece of code. And conversely, if the planning commission votes to not support a piece of code, then it, you know, they can kind of code two ways at that point. The council can, you know, say that we're not interested in taking it up, or they can say that they are interested in taking it up. But ultimately, the council is the final authority on approval of code.
Well, I've been on planning commission beginning and then I was on, you know, city council, then back on, probably eleven years, thereabouts, close, that when we have moved something to go to council, we've had a number of times where council said, we struggled with that and they sent it back to us for further work, which always seemed to work very well. And we went through it and worked it through and sent it back up and everything was fine. I think Dennis' concern, I've concerned is that, you know, being sidestepped or whatever, I'm not sure what the word is, but where mayor just took it upon himself to, to present this and not, not send it back. He said, I'm boss, I'm going to just keep it here and we're going to vote on it. That was hard. That was hard because we've done a lot of work, working on all that. And it seemed just inappropriate for him to just, to do that. And this never happened before. I mean, we've never, we've always had a very good relationship. We kind of had a roadmap that worked very well. All of a sudden, new mayor in here, it says, I'm boss, I'm going to go my way. And it's hard. It's hard. And I struggle with that. I struggle with that.
And I'll ask you guys to, to leave that on, on my plate as well. I, I have spoken to Brian about it. I did make an email out to the, the counselor that made the comments. And I'll be sitting down with the mayor as well on that.
And again, I think I mentioned before, I, I question the value of us sitting here wasting our time if, if we're going to not recommend something and it's going to go forward anyone. You don't, you don't need us to do that.
If it didn't happen, I would vote for Commissioner Brock for city council. So let me work with that, guys. It's not, it's not, I have not finished my work on that. Let's put it that way.
Well, we've done a lot of work over the years, great work. And, you know, obviously you have a lot of work to do still. And a lot of people, most people don't understand what we do. Even the council or the mayor, they don't really understand what we do.
And that's why I find those comments so disturbing.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, and I think if, for anyone who is, you know, since this is all public record, i- if we do take time in pushing something through, it's because of the, the diligence and the deliberation and the, the tenacity in which we look at everything and, and not just pushing the agenda through and knocking it out. So.
And Brian's kind of in a hard, we've got a rock and a hard spot, I know that. It's not, he's kind of like, what do I do, you know? It's, it's not easy. I understand.
I appreciate the comments, guys. Anything else?
That's, that's enough.
Okay. And, and just know that this is being worked on. So just, this is being worked on. Leave it, leave it to me and I'll take it offline. So, all right.
It's probably not needed to be said, but since I was talking about the alternate, I, I just wanted to be able to communicate. I have absolutely no offense not to be a voting member. I mean, that, that doesn't bother me at all, or whatever issues come along. And I recognize that as well. But I just.
I think it's a source that can
If it, it's good to get it clarified so there, there's not.
Well, and I think at least my concern with it, and I think Chair Algonchari shares it is, you know, the, the way that it's set up right now is, you know, you, you only can vote in a very limited case. But, and then in order to be able to exercise that, you have to have been, you know, participating and present. And so you still have to do all the work, but then you don't have any of the say. And that doesn't really seem fair to the alternate to be able, you know, to have to put in all the effort and then not be able to have their vote heard essentially.
Paul, we appreciate you being, being here, listening and being a participant. Or, you know, that's, that's, to me, that's important.
Yeah. But then, but then the other problem that I have in the code is read one way, you do vote. Read another way, you don't vote unless we can't hit quorum. But that quorum numbers, you literally have to have two people show up and then you would have a, so i- i- in, for me, it's, you know, I'm going to go Commissioner Knuprock on this is it's unclear. It needs to be fixed. No offense. I, I love that. So, anything else? All right. So we've been, maybe Jamie, we could probably remove one, one dot one-two and one thirteen from future agendas. We just usually skip over those as I, as I reach out to folks. So I'm going to go ahead and skip over those. But if there are no, well, actually, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Absolutely.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no
Does Paul vote or not?
Aye. All right. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye, aye. Any no's, any abstentions. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.